It is six o'clock and I am calling the Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. To order. Uh, we have our agenda already. Public comment, if you would please just keep it to two minutes. Do we have any public comment?
I have public comment. My name is Susan Sweetapple. I'm one of the owners of the Falls Village Inn. When I look at the town website, it says it's a welcoming community that respects the dignity and humanity of all of its neighbors and residences. It doesn't say anything about businesses. So, um, back in March of two thousand and twenty, when Mountainside Treatment Center moved into the inn, um, I was apparently turned in by the businesses across the street from me for oversleeping my capacity and possibly harboring COVID victims. Um, before they moved in, um, I called all the state officials, county officials, checked everything, and I was within my realm of them moving in. Then it was noted on Facebook that drug addicts were smoking on the side porch. Do Sue and Colin know about it? That was on the Northwest Chatter, which a member of our board is on a moderator on. That was never taken down. Brian Oler did that for me. It's a favor. That was very nice. A year later, in May of two thousand and twenty-one, um, the town received calls from businesses across the street that I had instructed my excavator to remove a marker that was where a town property was. That was proven false by the, um, by the survey maps that I had presented. Um, December two thousand and twenty-two, trees were cut down on our property. Henry did bring Tim over. Tim said he didn't like the way they looked, so he decided he would just cut them down. On our property, town since has not replanted those trees. That should be addressed. Um, we have a problem with plowing, which I see is on his old business, has never been on his new business. Um, first snowfall, they weren't able to plow the sidewalk. Second snowfall, I hadn't been able to trim because I had been sick with COVID. It made it through without any trimming. So this had been a back and forth over years. Like to get that straightened up. Um, February first, uh, the, um, building inspector was, um, told by businesses across the street and up the road that we were doing, um, stuff roofing and things that we were not doing and that we had not pulled a permit. My contractor had stated prior to that that we did not need to pull a permit. So, um, building inspector came and said, you don't need a permit for what you're doing. You're within the scope and realm of what you're doing. Um, the other day I was driving down Mean Street. I was told by a member of your board that I was to slow down. That person is not certified by the state, the county, or the town, does not have a radar gun, and was not in proper uniform. And to me, that person was jaywalking because she wasn't enough crosswalk. So I would like it noted that I feel that we're being harassed by the other businesses around town. I don't think a lot of people in the community are aware of me being under a very large microscope. So I make sure when I do something, my Ts are crossed and my Is are dotted. Um, I do pay my taxes. I, you know, employ a lot of people and I give the state a lot of money. Um, I don't think anybody here in their glass house should be throwing stones. We were taken off sponsorship of the car show. That doesn't hurt me. It hurts the people that are getting the money.
I'm gonna, gonna tell you, I've, I've yielded a couple more minutes.
Yep, and then, um, after the meeting, when I came here and I told you,
Right.
you took Judy and Tim into your office for a meeting, which opposing parties should not be meeting behind closed doors unless it is posted for a special meeting. So I would like that noted as well. Thank you for your time.
All right. Could you reduce that to an email and send it forward?
It's right on your, uh,
Right, but if, if you could enumerate that, and also just want to make you aware of the statute having to do with jaywalking down the state of Connecticut. Uh, if you want to familiarize yourself, if someone walks into a roadway, puts out their hand, you are to yield to them. And I'm not sure if that was the case.
Put out their hand and tell me to slow down.
Right, okay. But again, you should, you know, familiarize yourself with the new, as of October one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
Say, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Laura. Oh, identify yourself.
Laura Marks. I'm shocked that that was your response to Sue. This is the, the only functioning business that welcomes tourists into our town. Meanwhile, you attend all these cog meetings and talk about economic development. You spend two thousand dollars hiring an economic development coordinator, who, as far as I can tell, did nothing and, and for the life of me cannot understand why there is no support for Sue. I go out into the wider world and everyone talks about how much they love the inn. So I'm mystified and I realize mistakes can happen. You know, the tree's coming down. To me, that's not a big deal, but what's a big deal is that Henry said he would replace those trees and absolutely did not do it. So please, support our inn. I live practically next to it. And I feel like it's dangerous when that place is empty, which has been for, I think, almost ten years at a time. That is a hazard and it's a black hole in our town. So please, please support Sue and please support the inn and please. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other? Okay, then I'll make the one public comment. If you notice, oh, I'm sorry.
There's one here.
Oh, go right ahead.
Um, Vance, can you unmute and do your comment?
Sure. I'm sorry. I thought it said that we should do it as, uh, as a chat.
I'll show you all the comment and chat and we'll pull you, we'll call you in.
I just want to, uh, state my support of the letter that, um, Roxanne and, um, Meg have sent the Board of Selectmen regarding increasing the town's support for the D M Hunt Library. Uh, the letter itself, uh, does a very good job of explaining why we feel this is, uh, necessary and a good idea. Um, the data, uh, from the state show that our library is used more than most other towns, the, the great preponderance of other towns, um, in the state. And we are near the cellar as far as, uh, the amount of support that our town gives to our public library. Um, the building, of, of course, is a, is um, an historic gem in town and it needs a lot of upkeep, but also the library in our little town really is the cultural center. Um, all kinds of things happen for all kinds of people, for our kids, for our seniors, for everybody. Um, and we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, and it's not like the library doesn't raise a lot of their own funds. Again, the data show that, um, their fundraising is much greater than most other libraries. So I'm just urging the Board of Selectmen to consider it seriously and my fellow community members to support taking on a little more in their taxes to pay for that amazing little library. Thanks.
Thank you, Vance. And I might add that we are recipients, as of this afternoon, late this afternoon, of about a half a dozen letters, uh, regarding the library and, uh, they pretty much enumerate what you have said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Allen, and I also am here to support the library in the future.
Thank you.
Zoe Federchinko, and, um, as a board member for ten years and as president of Friends, an organization of volunteers that raises a lot of money for the library. Um, I want to offer my personal as well as friend's support in favor of increasing the town's financial um, contribution to the library. Thank you.
We laugh. I also am here to support the library and encourage um, serious consideration of the, the research that was done for that letter that was sent is amazing, and I think the facts will say.
Thank you. Sergey Federchinko, I'm also here to, uh, display my support for increasing funding to the library.
Thank you. Anyone, any other public comment? Thank you all.
Any other public comment on Zoom? Somebody's connecting.
I have one question. How much are you, do we already give them? Let's see, they want seventy-five thousand.
I'm, I'm sorry to be a pain, sir, but you have to identify.
John Hadden.
Right, John.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering how much we already gave them, because it said it was a significant increase, but the letter didn't say how much we already gave them.
You have that right there. Hold on just a moment. I don't have that. It's going to be John, but.
I couldn't find it anywhere that's where I'm at.
We have fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's something that should go out to a vote as to the town. I mean, we had that referendum on ten grand for a bridge or fixing your A C. You're talking twenty-five thousand dollars.
What that will do is, what we will do is, we will put that in our budget. And then the Board of Finance will be looking at the budget, or I shouldn't say budget. We put together a spending plan, John. Thank you. So, Ken. Uh, treasure and tax collectors' report. Uh, have you, um, the other selectmen have a chance to look at? Both of them? We have a report from January and a report from December.
I see that the, uh, one of them was amended this afternoon, correct? And I didn't have a chance to look at that.
Okay.
I'd love to.
Would you like to speak to that, uh, amendment?
Sure. The amendment this afternoon was to the January report. Um, and I had a typo in the bottom of the, of first general fund. Um, so it's actually three hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, um, which then just changed the top, um, to make the projected general fund nine hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. All of the spreadsheets that were attached were correct.
Okay, thank you. I was here when I caught that.
Yeah, yeah.
When you gave it to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry. I added a preview of it for everyone else. Uh, tax collectors also, if you have a chance to look over the tax collector.
I didn't have a chance to look over that one yet.
We didn't want to add it. I didn't have any questions on it.
Nor did I. I would take a motion to accept the treasures report and the tax collector's report as presented.
Go.
Uh, can you second it? I would prefer to abstain because I didn't really have a chance to read it.
We could always table it for.
Can we table it till we have some?
Well, second it and we'll
I second it.
discuss it. Okay.
So.
You don't, don't want to vote on it because you haven't had a chance to.
Haven't had a chance.
I'm saying it from it. Okay. So unless amended, it, uh, that, uh, I'll take an amended, uh, motion.
Um, I make a motion that we table the treasures report to the next meeting.
And the
Tax collector.
The tax collector. We need a motion to amend a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to amend a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Now, your motion.
I make a motion that we, um, table the tax collector and the treasures report into our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I do.
Right.
I'm sorry. You said to your next meeting? Yes. Mark me.
Okay. Okay, communications, um, all of these communications, and thank you, uh, thanks to the secretary. She attached all these communications that we've had in communications, uh, most of which are, uh, asking for funding or additional funding, uh, everything from the Center on Main all the way through the, uh, Northwestern Transit District. So, uh, there have been some changes. The one, uh, we'll talk about, uh, the Tarrington Health District is the one that's really surprising here in a positive. I have no oral communications. Moving over to the selectman's report. Uh, we received our annual assessment from the Tarrington Area Health District. Believe it or not, it didn't go up. We are the same as last year. We are being assessed for five thousand, nine hundred seven dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year based on our population. It's a per capita rate of five dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, if you, and Lou Timolat was our representative to the Tarrington Area Health District and has done a fantastic job there. Uh, gave me, uh, just a breakdown of, uh, other state of Connecticut full-time health districts. And, uh, I have to tell you, uh, by far, we are the least expensive. So, uh, kudos to them for no change, and they have had no change since two thousand and fifteen, when it was five dollars and forty-two cents per capita. So again, a lot of, uh, sharp pencils there, I guess. Um, Mira, our, um, M S W, um, our municipal solid waste, um, is dissolving. Uh, as you probably all know, uh, we are working presently with the Northwest Hills Council of Governments to try to find a solution to our trash. Um, the letter that we received, which is attached, uh, to our agenda, uh, right now, they are not changing their tipping fee, still remaining the same. Uh, the state has said it that they could not change their tipping fee, but they are ending business between, uh, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. As you know, the plant that was right along the Connecticut River in Hartford has been shut down. Again, uh, I would tell you I have a meeting at the end of this week with, uh, the cog to discuss a little bit further about how we, as a region, are going to move forward with this, uh, problem. But again, this is attached and it, it is full of information. I'm going to read the entire, uh, letter to you. I received a, uh, a letter from Kayla Johnson, our assessor, and she is looking at appointment of Board of Assessor alternates. Uh, she has not presented us with any names right now, but she cites Connecticut Section nine dash one ninety-nine for Board of Assessment Appeals and needing, uh, alternate and, and additional members. And, uh, the Board of Selectmen may appoint an alternate for each member of the Board of Assessment Appeals. I haven't received anything from her on how many, uh, alternates she would like, but she is looking for alternates. So any of those, you who out there who would like to join the, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals, there are openings. We, uh, have included the transfer station report as of one nine twenty-four. Um, of particular note is the food scrap collection, the curbside compost, uh, in October. I think this is, uh, as a quarter is very, very interesting, but sort of speaks for itself. In October, we collected, uh, one thousand, one hundred pounds, November, fifteen hundred pounds, and December, fifteen hundred pounds. So that is, uh, weight, waste that is not going into our, uh, normal compactor there and, uh, us getting charged for it. Um, again, it is attached, so you can review it. Um, spending plan workshops for the Board of Selectmen. We had our first one on, uh, January, excuse me, February eighth. And I just remembered, as I looked here, we approved the minutes. Madam Secretary?
Say that again?
Did we approve the minutes of the past two meetings, or did I gloss over that?
We. Oh, you glossed over it. Yeah.
Okay.
So did I.
Okay, well, we'll get back to it after the, the letters here. I apologize. Uh, but we have our letter that went out to all of the, uh, all the chairs of the boards asking for their uh, individual, uh, spending plans so that we can put them in the spending plan that we will be working on. Uh, last but not least, then the selectman's report, and actually not the last but not least, U S Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration, as well as the state, is asking for us to update information on our roads. I'm looking across at our D P W chief. And we spoke already, we have to get on an interactive map tomorrow and map those those highways out that we have, uh, either, what is it, uh, Canaan Mountain, we've paved a mile and chip sealed something else. So we'll have
Music Mountain.
Music Mountain. Thank you. Taking care of all those mountain roads. Uh, treasure bookkeeper status. Uh, we had a meeting on the fourteenth executive session. There was nothing, no action taken. Excuse me, on the eighth, and no action taken. We will be having a meeting tomorrow on the fourteenth. Uh, Economic Development Director Committee update from, uh, cog. They are releasing, uh, next week, everything, uh, having to do with economic development, maybe some, including their mission statement. Uh, but, uh, I don't have it complete, but I will share it with everyone when it is completed. Uh, also on the selectman's report, I think I can put this in now that, uh, the Recreation Committee, congratulations to Ted Moy, uh, who will be serving as the chairman of the Recreation Committee. Old business. Uh, plan of conservation and development, uh, was approved by the P Z, January twenty-fourth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Koshlin, while you're here, might I impose upon you for any, any wisdom regarding that?
Um, no, we had a meeting. We, we approved it. We were presented with it, uh, did our updates and, uh, I guess we were presenting it to you for your approval.
Okay, so has, uh, the selectman here had an opportunity to review the P O C D?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, based on that, and I had had a chance to, uh, we'll handle it under new business then, or no? Can we handle it under, we can put it under new business now for a vote.
It says possible action.
Yes, we have that. Um, here is some, something that I will tell you. I took from, uh, notes and I mistakenly put it under old business because I wanted to address it. I should have put it under new business and then we could have moved it along or as a discussion item. But, uh, updates on snow removal in front of the Falls Village Inn. Chris, I'm just going to defer to you for a moment.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, Sue reached out to me, um, about her concern. Um, we, we reviewed, uh, the bushes that, um, were pretty much kind of in the way. Uh, I marked them with some survey flags and I guess you didn't have a chance to uh, trim them, or you did?
No, it's done now.
Okay.
But it wasn't for the second snowstorm that it made it through. They're done now and they're left on the ground, so you can see everything that was trimmed.
Yeah, sure. So, uh, there was a, there was quite a bit of overgrowth, uh, going into the sidewalk area. So, uh, I guess we're in pretty good shape then. Is that for, can you get your machine through there now?
Get to the steps.
Okay.
And get from the steps toward the old firehouse.
Okay.
That's up there.
Okay. All right, so we have our update there. And again, I, I will, will tell you, I, I had made a note and just thought we should, should cover it. And I put it in your old business. That was my mistake in, uh, in the, uh, agenda. New business.
Dave, did you approve that P O C D?
I was going to do that under new business. Oh, okay. Well, then, in that case.
It's possible action.
I have possible action down there. Okay, so, uh, both of the selectmen had, uh, and I had a chance to review the P O C D. Uh, all in favor of the P O C D as, oh, excuse me. Please make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve or accept.
Accept.
Accept the P O C D, um, plan of conservation and development.
As presented.
As presented. It's twenty-four, thirty-four, or twenty-three, twenty, what, what is it?
January twenty-fourth, twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, but it's for ten year, twenty-four?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thirty-four?
Until thirty-four. I apologize.
Right, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah. To approve the plan of composite conservation and development as presented by planning and zoning for twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four? Yes. And you made that, too, yes. Okay, sorry.
You seconded, Chris.
Yeah, does that have to go to, uh, town meeting?
We have to take it to town meeting, yes, so for final approval.
Is that part of the motion?
It should be part of the motion to, for, to present.
And, um, we should proceed to bring it to town and recommend send to town meeting?
Recommend that it's sent, it's sent to town.
Okay, so you didn't accept. You're approving.
We're approving it. Okay, I'm sorry. Approving.
Send to town.
A recommendation to send it to town meeting.
And I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Tax rebates and, uh, consideration of approval suspension list. We don't have any. We'll leave. No, we don't have any from the tax collector.
Yeah.
Um, Board of Assessment Appeals, um, I would like to honor, uh, Kayla Johnson's, uh, recommendation that we would consider appointment of alternates when we are presented with them. I don't think we need any action.
How many?
No, she didn't say how many at this point in time.
Okay. Okay. So.
I don't think we need to act on it at this point in time. I think when we're presented with the, uh, the appointment of alternates, then we'll act on it.
Okay.
Uh, Bridge and Infrastructure Committee. I consider the appointment of a new committee member.
Um, I made a motion to, uh, uh, appoint Sergey Federchinko to the, uh, Bridge and Infrastructure Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Big eye.
Thank you.
Also under the Bridge and Infrastructure Committee, and I, uh, know this has been a little bit of, uh, a, a discussion, the solar project subcommittee. Uh, Chris, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, the, uh, like, I kind of, uh, would like to form a separate committee, uh, independent of the Bridge and Infrastructure Committee, because the when the Board of Selectmen uh, made the, established the, the Bridge and Infrastructure Committee, uh, ten sixteen, this, I'm reading this from the ten sixteen, uh, selectman minutes, uh, from the selectman's meeting, uh, establish a working committee, the Bridge Infrastructure Committee, consisting of three, uh, selectmen, the highway superintendent, three qualified individuals from the town with the purpose of studying the bridges and other infrastructure within the town, including buildings for their condition, repair and maintenance plans. I don't think the, um, the solar idea really doesn't fall under that purview. So I think I'd rather keep it separate, uh, any committee that we form separate from the Bridge Committee and.
So would you like to make a motion and, uh, number of members that?
Sure, I think, uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to form a, uh, um, solar project sub, or the solar project committee, uh, including, uh, the members of the Board of Selectmen, the, uh, um, one member of the uh, Recreation Commission and, uh, one member from the, uh, Board of Finance.
Well, we do have two that said that, um, Board of Finance that were interim.
But, but my, my question is, and I go back to your, your, uh, where you started, um, I don't think we want all three selectmen on it, okay, on the committee, uh, we'll have one, and I would ask you as
Okay.
to, to hunch of that, uh, and then we would have another one as I would be the ex officio.
Okay, that's, yeah, sure.
Uh, I think that would work. Um, so, you're.
So that was, uh, let's see, alright, so, uh, myself, uh, one selectman, he was ex officio, uh, a member of the, uh, Rec Commission, a member of the, of two members of the Board of Finance, yeah, probably wouldn't be a bad idea. There's quite a bit, yeah, quite a bit involved in, uh, there will be a lot in that.
And maybe one member of P and Z.
I, I, uh, 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 and, and thank you, I, I knew this. We should have a member of the Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
And I think having a couple of members of the community who are also interested in it, so, um.
So that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven members?
How about up to ten?
You can say up to ten, alright, so, your, your, do, do you have all that down?
Oh, well, I, no, because you didn't officially make a motion, but here's what I wrote down.
We, we want, we want a for, a.
Form a solar project committee to include one selectman, I don't have to include ex officio because you're.
No, I'm not there.
Okay, one member of the Rec Commission, two members of the Board of Finance, one member of P and Z, for a total of up to ten members.
I think that.
True.
Advisory Committee to the.
Committee. Solar project.
Okay.
Advisory to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
To the Board of Selectmen. Okay. I second that. Gee.
All in favor?
Right.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. Um, next I have a, uh, from the Chairman of the P and Z. Uh, I'll read it to you, to the Board of Selectmen, at the January twenty fifth regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously, unanimously, excuse me, recommend that Kim Mahoney be appointed to the Commission to replace Ted Moy as a regular member. The Commission believes that Ms. Mahoney will be a valuable and well qualified addition to the Commission, I know we have three members of the P and Z, uh, and I will ask them for any comment.
I could find it, it would be a great candidate, but she, well, is, if you pass her.
Yeah, I agree absolutely, um, Kim fit right in, she's definitely somebody we, we don't want to let get away.
Yes, agreed, and that's why we're here to support Kim's appointment, so we please hope that you appoint. Alright, my, my question is of the term, uh, Fred did not put down the term, he, he, she is, uh, replacing Ted Moy and Moy, as Ted was until?
June twenty twenty sixth.
June twenty, thank you.
Right.
I'm, I move to, uh, appoint Kim Mahoney to June twenty twenty six.
To fill Ted Moy's vac- vacancy?
To fill Ted Moy's vacancy. Is he planning a zoning?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, P and Z members. Okay. Uh, early voting certification. Um, I see we have both registrars here and, uh,
Oh, Stephen.
I have, I have a copy of it here, it describes the location, uh, location exterior, um. I'm, I'm going, going to ask our, our registrar over there, since the other one will be recording, as a recording secretary, uh.
She's over here.
Oh, there she is, okay, uh, Sue, would you like to speak to this quickly?
Um, as you all know, we are faced with early voting now in Connecticut, and what's being required is that all towns have to submit to the state, they call it a written certification, which outlines basically the layout and the whole procedure that we have in plan to facilitate early voting in our town. And they, they basically sent us a, a format of everything that we needed to address. And, and I have seen three other towns' plans, I mean, it's very similar to ours. Um, basically, um, and just, so what, what's basically happening, which most of the reporters, but this room kind of gets divided with a big divider, so that early voters will come through the back door and go, go exit through the back door too. We do not anticipate a large, I mean, we have, it's, first of all, it's a primary, so only Republicans and Democrats that are registered can, can vote anyway, so that eliminates all the unaffiliated voters in our town, so it, we're starting with a smaller base level of potential people coming in, um. So we, we think we can do it, we're gonna try to have this half here, and what we can meet, we think all of the requirements as far as handicapped, is handicapped accessibility, um, the handicap machine for voting, um, in privacy, um, so it's gonna be a challenge for us. Um, before the primaries, only four days of early voting, so it's kind of a good trial for us, where it might become more of an issue and we have to submit another certification plan for the November one, um. That's fourteen days early voting, and that's a big disruption for the town hall. Um, um, the, the three people who use those offices there um, did meet out here with me and we kind of laid it out and, and they, they felt that they could accommodate us. Um, so, you know, they'll, they'll still be able to have access to their offices, and if, and if privacy's an issue, they all can close their doors. Um, you know, if they have to discuss something with, with anybody coming in, so I think we can do it. Um, the, the big caveat is that we have to be able to have access to our, they call it, you know, C D R S line, which is a direct line only to the state, it's for security purposes, and especially now, it is very difficult, if, if we were to go somewhere else, like either to the senior center, um, it's, it's a, it's a pretty long and bob, inexpensive process of getting another hookup with that special line. So we really would like to try to stay here if, if we can, so we'll see, as I said, this four days, um, will be a good test for us. Um, um, I think that's about it.
Okay.
Is, is that the plan with the official checker back in it? Because I talked to the state today, we do have to have one. Did you get my email?
No, I didn't check.
Okay.
Yeah, we also have the voter list and the official checker.
We, we claim that there are two people that are meeting, that, that will brief the people at the table to do all the required, um, I don't, I don't know, they keep, the state is impossible to work with, every single day we get a different mandate, it, it's, it's very difficult.
Well, thank you for explaining it.
Denise, I cannot answer that question, my last one, I took official checker out because we got an email yesterday from the registrar of the voters, Chris Crew, and he said there are no official checkers, so I took it out, so I don't know.
I didn't see it in the registrar email box, I didn't see it in the email box, but that's okay.
It would have been the registrar.
Either way.
All over, wrote that.
Uh, uh, another state mandate.
So I, maybe this has to be done a full time.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't, I don't know what to tell you about signing, well, you don't sign it in the name and eyes of me.
Yes.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, um. Uh, we're going to it right now. And I'm not quite sure how we, we skipped right over that. Um, have you had a chance to, uh, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of the January eighth special meeting and the February eighth special meeting.
Approved.
Approved, thank you.
I know.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, let's hope next month is a regular meeting, not a special meeting.
Yes.
Um, any, uh, no, no, um, any other public comment at the end?
I've got one on chat. Um, Dana Rebel asked if I would turn the audio and the video on before the meeting started, and I responded with the video and audio start when the meeting starts as required, and she has asked me to pose the question of audio to the selectman, not appear at product fiat, so she'd like the selectman to determine when the audio and recording start.
Okay, that's something that I would have to look into and be quite honest with you, I'm not sure if we can start it ahead of time, any time ahead of time of, of the meeting, and I'd be willing to, uh, contact, uh, F O Y and see how that is determined, or if there's any type of determination when it's turned on.
Thank you.
Because I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, but I would think while everyone was filing in, there's a lot of noise, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg Marlowe, sixty eight Belton Street, uh, want to commend the Board of Selectmen for forming the solar project subcommittee.
No, it's committee now.
Committee, however, ended up, uh, I thank you for doing that, it's something that's near dear, I had the chance to speak with two of you, Judy, you're on my list to get to, to speak with as well, um. Just to get a little bit of the peek behind where I'm, where I'm coming from, what I see as a vision for the town, so, yes, the Board of Finance is very important. They have some great questions that need to be answered, um, but they should only be part of the process, right, the Board of Selectmen should really steer this, in my opinion, I think the green initiative is well beyond, um, time to start, um, at one point in Falls Village history, we were one of the greenest towns, if not even greenest town in the state, so we've kind of lost track of that a little bit, and I, I would hope that we can try to get back on then.
I apologize, Greg, I was pointing at this award twenty twenty one, we were bronze, not a gold, but a bronze.
So, um, you know, the, I, I cautioned that this committee should be selected and acted on very quickly for the current project that originally started, to get all of it, whatever information there is, out to this committee for everybody to look at. I've yet to see it fully, even as a former selectman, I haven't seen all the, what's there, but it'd be nice to get that out to the committee, because this could easily die in the committee time wise, right, because we're in the middle of February, and I think we have to answer on this particular grant, if we choose to use it by June, which would be a town meeting and everything that goes along with it, so there's a lot to do in a short amount of time. So I would ask to be, for it to be expedited as far as selecting members, and I think the first meeting should be within two weeks, obviously, from today.
Okay, and all files will be open, right, at four?
It's just, the sooner, the sooner it gets out, the sooner that the committee can get to work on to get up the speed, because this, it's a large amount of time to turn.
Any other public comments? Steve, oh, go ahead.
Oh, uh, Stephen Coslin, um, I, I, to tag along with what Greg said about the solar, uh, committees formation, um, I think it's important to have inland wetlands, um, have a member, uh, be a part of it as well, um, at least down at the rec area, there is a, a lot of water. So I think, I, I do feel it's appropriate for them to be added to the committee.
Okay, we have that.
Yeah, well, we'll consider that when.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Uh, on, on grants. Don't go, sorry. Uh, on grants. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when the state sends out notifications for fiscal year available funds, grants, whatnot, it would come to you.
Yes.
Are you getting any notifications for the next fiscal year, and is that something that would be worth putting on the agenda?
The grants?
Well, just the topic of, uh, state grants or funding coming in.
That's something we could, we get them, uh, we, uh, get them, uh, from the CAG. We also get them from the state, the ones that are sent from the state are bits and pieces, the CAG actually takes them and puts them into one communication. Uh, so, yeah, I think that's something we would be able to do, there's no reason why we cannot.
So like even Steve France would go through that, not Greg, would you?
Uh, they've come directly to me, but they also come through the CAG.
Okay.
I just, the CAG is aware of, of everything that's going on legislatively.
Yeah.
And, oop, sorry about that. Uh, everything that's coming through legislatively, and what the CAG has been very, very good at doing is they'll take a, a number of grants and they'll send them out altogether. Now, we'll get them from different agencies and so on, so for them, we'll get some from the state that are all together, but they tend to put together one cogent list from top to bottom of, of what's available.
Right.
And I will say that will ca- capture everyone, though, but they do capture this.
Yeah, I just, like, they support we don't listen all around.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Laura Worms, uh, could the EV charger possibly be rolled in with the solar committee? Because as far as I know, it seems to be an orphan, I'm still getting emails from the company that put it in about what plans we're gonna be doing, somehow they got my email, and I think that we have to have a warranty uh, agreement with them that is quite expensive, so maybe that's been taken care of.
We, that has been taken care of.
Sure, we losing money on that, I never see anybody using it.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, Laura, we're not making any money on it, we're not losing any money either at this point in time, we upped our rates, okay, to cover with everything, but, um, it was used, I can tell you it was used over this weekend, I saw a car, and so, but thank you. Any other comments? Is there anything online, Denise? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, then I just have one comment for public comments tonight, just want to thank everyone here, and, uh, it wasn't totally conveyed in the newspapers, uh, well, Waterbury Republican it was, but, uh, I saw the Lakewood Journal and I was a little disappointed, uh, in the coverage for the Democracy Cup, because they failed to mention that I thanked all the voters, not just the registrars, not just the poll workers, not just the other selectmen, but I thank everyone in the town for giving us that sixty eight point seven percent. And, uh, I look across the room and realize all of you who were actually involved in that, and, uh, just want to say a heartfelt thanks, uh, for a small town, uh, we roared pretty loud. Uh, not only were we the highest in towns under ten thousand, we were the highest turnout in the state. So I think that's something actually to be very, very, very proud of. So I thank everyone, all the voters, because without the voters coming out, I think it was Al Gore who said, uh, uh, you know, uh, poll numbers are down because, uh, what is it, uh, people showing up at the poll, the, the numbers are down because no one's showing up. Uh, I believe that's he who said that, but.
Pretty sure.
Or Spiro Agnew, one of the two, for those who remember Spiro Agnew, okay.
I've taken a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
I am adjourning at the seven forty nine P M, or, excuse me, six forty nine P M.
Calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Thanks so much, everyone, for coming. Um, we do not need to see alternates, but I would like to, uh, welcome John to the table, I'm so happy that you're here because it's great, you'll be getting up to speed, but more and more you attend, and I also just want to let you know that we're all available to you, um, uh, to fill you in if you have questions, and our treasurer, and our tax collector, and our selectmen, and are all happy to do that, I'm just really encouraging new blood. And so, don't hesitate to ask questions, and I do also want to mention, I mean, um, that I welcome, and I think all of the members of the Board of Finance welcome, although the alternates can't vote there, we depend on you to deliberate with us, and it's, it's great to have your feedback and points of view and questions. So, um, public comment. Very much, yeah, hi, Greg, how are?
Greg Marlowe, I do, well, thank you, Amy. Uh, so a couple things, uh, the meeting just prior, the Board of Selectmen set up a committee for, to deal with the solar project, potential solar project in town, and, um,
And, um, following along through the Board of Finance minutes, I saw a list of questions. Um, after the election that came along. And I feel like time is getting really tight with the one grant that is available currently. So I would just ask if there's any more questions that came out sooner than later. Because as you go month to month meeting, you know, that you're in March and then you're, I've got a question that turns into April. And, you know, before you know it, municipal, uh, speed, it'll be, you know, past June, which I think we have to have a year before. So if there's anything more, I will ask the Board of Finance to maybe ask that question to me, maybe add it to the agenda. I didn't.
We can't add to the, but there are other ways that are bringing together. Thank you.
And then secondly, um, I thought about the last special meeting that we told. Um. I don't believe that it was kind of per state. Stats and protocol was followed. I don't, and, and I, I don't, the, the, the purpose of it, I, that's, I'm not speaking about that at all. It purely about how it was run. Um, I don't think that members who requested the meeting needed to be named through anything that I could find. I know that there's two members that need to have written requests to the chairperson and, or the chairperson can call. Um, but I don't think that they need to be named. It's okay that they did, but I just felt like that changed maybe the tenor, tenor of it a little bit. I don't believe that the adjournment was, I can't find anything in the statutes. I did ask, uh, selectmen barter as well and, and so they looked into it and get back to me. But I didn't think it any to force that adjournment. So it's purely about the protocol, nothing about the subject of the year. Um, I would suggest that if the board has not done so, you know, the, um, Steve Costlin thing. Thank you, Steve. Uh, Fitz gave me a nice manual of F O I that it's actually helped me, even though I have pretty long history in useful life. It's, it's still starting to be up on it. And for the Board of Finance, and I don't know if everything has it, but there was something put out in nineteen ninety-two, believe it or not, but it's really good. And, you know, anything in the Board of Finance, I historically come back to that and it's, it's helped me. So with different members, um, just wanted to mention that in case, you know, uh, that has not been.
Right, I did share the, uh, Board of Finance handbook with everybody at the month after the election. And, and he's right that that's an important thing. Um, I would also mention, um, that for the sake of our recording secretary, um, please, uh, speak one at a time and clearly as, as Greg has just now. Um, uh, just to. So that she can record these and even reference them on the recording too. Any other public comments?
Can I reply to Greg's point about solar? He looked back at our minutes in January eight, both Carl Munson and I were, were, expressed interest being involved.
As to that.
From the Board of Finance, yes, so we can circle this after.
Thank you.
You will.
We're putting up a committee of up to ten.
Great. Um, if I'm not on it, it's fine. I can listen to it, right? Okay, we're going to, uh, communications. This is a special meeting.
Just checking if anyone on Zoom has a, has a comment, public comment.
But may I add one?
Yeah.
On F O I, I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but the law has changed in July. Um, they gave the F O I Commission expanded grounds to now over there. Charge a fine. Funds are rare unless there's a pattern and usually refuses to give documents. But the biggest change is they increased the fine to five thousand dollars and that fine can no longer be paid by the town or insurance company. It has to be paid from the wallet of the person who was found. Um, didn't follow F O I. So it's even more important now as a person to, to hear, yeah. Get the book. It's a good one.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Okay, end of public comment. Um, communications. Um, this is a special meeting, so, uh, we won't be, uh, delving into the different communications. But they will be, uh, mentioned here for, uh, recording as part of the public record. Um, we received a communication from Daily Revel about legislation that is now being reviewed in committee in Hartford about, um, the, uh, changes, possible changes, fiscal omission of the auto tax in towns and some possible restructuring and the request to the Board of Finance to consider the potential impact on such legislation, should it be carried forward. So that was one. Another is a letter from, uh, Rapsan Steinberg and Meg Share of in support of a request from D M Hunt Library in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And another in support of that same, uh, matter from D M Hunt Library Board Member Carol Taylor. And a fourth communication from me as, uh, giving my colleagues notice that as of the end of this meeting, I'll be resigning as Chair of the, of the Board of Finance. Um, and I think, and, uh, any other? The other communication we got was from a C C from the Torrington Area Board of Health, where there's no change in the rates there for our town. And that was it for written communication.
Dennis, did you mention, did you mention the car taxes?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, yeah.
Oral communications. I just want to remind my colleagues that I did share with you a draft of our twenty-four, twenty-five budget proposal. And if you could get back to me, I'm just volunteering as a community member to get it going. And so I've never, actually, in the few years I've been on this board, I've never participated in that process. So thank you, um, for getting it going, Michelle and Dave. And I welcome any feedback. I'm going to submit that at the end of the week to the selectmen so they can also provide. Sure, any other oral communication? Okay, um, we're going to go to the reports. We have, uh, two secretaries' reports, um, the January eighth special meeting minutes and the January twentieth special meeting minutes to, uh, to vote and approve. May I, uh, would you, I have a question. Does anyone have any concern about, uh, proving them together?
No, I just have a question about the January eighth.
Then we should definitely do it singly then.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm accepting not, uh, receiving, not approving.
Who's talking?
This is Carol's, you said approving, you mean receiving.
No, this, the minutes we approved.
Oh, the minutes. I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem. Hi, Carol.
Hi.
Um, J, so, one at a time anyway. Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighth, twenty twenty-four special meeting, the Board of Finance?
Still moved?
Steve, a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, I'm, uh, I'll take Carol's and. Okay, Steve and Carol, now it's, um, it is up for discussion and time.
One small point, I don't recall the January eighth meeting being a special meeting, was it?
Yeah.
Did we move location? Is that why?
Yes.
Cause we were up in senior center, okay.
Very good. That's why I made it a special meeting. Interesting.
Um, any other changes or amendments? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye. Ca- Carol, can we hear from you?
Yes, aye. Did you not hear me?
I just want to check.
No, no, I just don't know how loud to yell into my computer.
No, you're doing fun. I'm just checking.
Um, and, uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the January twentieth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes? David, I mean, John, John Steinis is doing that one. You have two Johns now? Okay, a second.
Second.
David, okay. And it's on the table. Is there, is there any amendment or change to those special meeting minutes?
I was not present for that.
Okay, great. But I heard you caught up on your own.
I did catch up.
Excellent.
I don't see.
What's that? Yeah, I have to abstain.
Yes.
Then you have to do a roll call vote.
Because, Carol?
Because it's not unanimous and there's two members on Zoom.
Okay.
Or one member.
I didn't do that for the last one, but.
Because it was unanimous.
Okay, very good. Okay. Um, all in favor of approving the January twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes, say aye, uh, round the table. Um.
Aye.
Tom, uh, Steve.
Stein.
Hey.
Aye.
John Steinis says aye, uh, um, and David, uh, and Carol.
Aye.
Amy says aye. Okay, so we have all our ayes except one extension, which is Steve. Motion carries. Okay. Great, thank you. Now we have the treasurer's report. And thank you, Michelle, for sending us, um, copies of the January report and, or updated ones for the December one. Um, I also want to mention that I, um, it was me who pushed, um, Michelle, by the way, to, uh, send us the December reports for the special meeting in January. That, uh, even though she said they were going to be incomplete, um, that doesn't speak to the errors, but it definitely, um, she made it clear that they weren't complete at that time and so have to own that. Um, but, uh, we have the, I'm going to take the December report first, I guess, and ask, um, for a motion to accept the December reports that we've received just recently today.
She moved.
To receive, you want to receive.
You want to receive them, not approve them.
Yes, we're only receiving them. I said received, actually. December report, um, to be received, uh, so I have a, a motion, uh, from Tom. Can I have a second?
Second.
Steve? Okay, any questions about the, um, report, the updated report that we have?
Right. You go first.
I'm just concerned about they are wondering why there's a variance with the total reserve accounts on the front page. To the total. So if you're a total reserve here in December.
Yeah.
It should match that. And it does not. So that just concerns me.
The capital reserves?
Yes, the capital reserve number.
One million.
One million, should match the total reserve, um, on the front.
It should. I will look into that. I don't know why. Should be correct in June. This is our corrected up to date minutes.
Yeah, okay, and that does tie.
And that does tie to this one.
So.
So this one is an old figure here, I would say.
And then I guess.
So the one on the capital reserve page is correct?
Uh, the one on the capital reserve page is correct.
One million twenty-one.
And this is. And then you'll see a difference here because, um, there was money paid out of the painting reserve. Um, there was also money paid out of for cardinal engineering and, um, the kilo roofing profit. So that's why you'll see a lower number there.
Okay, and while you're on it. I'm looking at the December expense column. There's a hundred and fifteen thousand on the debt service, but it doesn't move over into January.
It does not.
I was just like.
Yep, no, I do have an explanation. I have a great explanation for that, actually, because I was confused myself. So, um, N B T sent us a loan bill for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I cut a check for it and was like, this doesn't seem right. I went back in the file, that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was paid in July. And it was our one-time payment. I contacted N B T, had to go back and forth with them because they, switching from Salisbury Bank to N B T, they did not, because we only pay every year. So that check has been voided and taken out. That's why it's not in the January.
Can you just point on the report to what you're?
We're looking at the December monthly expenditure report and I know I printed it.
Debt service.
The debt service line, which is about in the middle of the report. It has a hundred and fifteen thousand in the column for twelve, one to twelve thirty-one. So it's a third number, it's over from the left.
So I, I can explain that with all the know back and that I cannot backdate voids. That's why it stays in there. So when I avoided it, it doesn't not to lose.
So you also had a ver- a number of variances between the two.
Yeah.
For your line items.
Yeah, yeah, so that can be voids and changes or journal entries in between the two. I'm glad you asked.
It doesn't, it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah.
Hopefully QuickBooks will make this better.
Like, like a hundred and fifteen thousand changed, like, I could get one from, uh, January second, but I couldn't do that.
No, and, and it's helpful because the other thing we need is that you can't show on these reports. And I think we'll be able to show on the QuickBooks is you can't see the, the expenditures out of the capital reserve.
Yeah.
So you do not know why has it been decimated and you don't have a beginning from an audit. And it'll be nice to be able to see.
Right.
That.
You'll be able to see the whole.
I want to see the story and you can't see the story when you don't have the history and you.
And if you, if you ever want to see more of the story, while I'm still working on all the know back and god, I will, I can come in. I can show you the paper chest so you can see it a little clearer. I know it's confusing, it's just a different system, so no problem on it tonight.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. So that's the December, uh, updated December report, the motions, um, for any other questions? Yes, John?
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a comment, not so much a question. I didn't really get a chance to look at these because, um, they came late. I printed them up, um, but didn't get a chance to look at them with any care. Uh, but I gave him a quick glance and, well, I know we're talking about the December report. But I, I glanced also at the, uh, at the January report. And I'm having difficulty, um, seeing how the projected general fund from the revised December report, which is about eight hundred and fifty thousand, um, through to it's about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars greater.
Yep.
In the revised January report. And it, it just wasn't clear to me how that could happen. Now, there may be a logical explanation for that.
So when you get to the January report, do you want to?
Well, they're kind of related.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, I can't answer to it. It's, um, so there's a couple of things that happened in December and January. Um, there's, um, revenue is projected as best we can, but we did get more revenue. We got, um, which is going to change because you guys will make an appropriation at the next meeting of thousand seven, thirteen months. So we got a ten thousand dollar grant for the registrar voters, um, of ten thousand five hundred. So that actually is in the revenue side, but not in the other side yet. So that makes a growth. There was also more funds from some state income than were projected in the original, um, projection. And there's different incomes that come in that are more. We can't project the revenue as well as the expenditure. So that's how you see the growth, interdental funds, once.
Yes, it, it was the size of the growth.
Yeah.
Because I think the unexpected revenue that came in in January, and I don't think I printed this part out, was in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars. And the, and the growth is, I'll tell you why I'm saying all of this in a second. Uh, the growth is, is in excess of eighty thousand dollars. But my real point is this, I didn't have a chance to really look at these things because they came late. And, um, I would suggest that unless we're absolutely sure that everything hangs together, that rather than receive it now, we should just table it. So we have a chance to look at these and make sure that they hang together. And true for the December report and, and the revised January. Because I know we're not on the January yet, but there were some corrections made to that. They look good to me, but again, I had about an hour to look at these things.
Um, yeah, I think the January report only has one correction. Uh, am I wrong?
Um, it has one, it has.
I have, I see, I know you're understanding the point.
Yeah, um, it has one correction in the bottom, which was, was totally my typo. It was, I put, um, three hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-five thousand, which changed the top, um, a little bit, or by twenty thousand dollars eventually. But then I also had some corrections, um, in my statements, um, just via Linda and I looking at our little ballot today that I just corrected because I was correcting the report. It was not anything large or any, it just, I did it as of that day. Um, I will also, well, we're not talking about January first, I'm like, sorry.
So there, there's a request to table it so that people can have a little bit more time to look at it. I'm just going to, uh, go around the room just to find out if, if you want to table it. The motion is on. Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard, I, I.
It's hard, it's hard. I I don't mean to be rude. I'm not, but it's hard because I'm, it there's a delay here. Um, do we have to, in that case, submit, um, modify the actual motion to receive, like?
Once we know what we're doing, yes, it would be modified, but we're not here yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just wanna find out, um, John suggesting that we table this and potentially the other one as well so that people can have a little bit more time, especially after our 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 valuable lesson on the twentieth to learn more about what these reports mean and how they connect to one another. I just wanna know if if other people wanna table them or you or we can, I don't know if it's appropriate to to take. You have a motion on the table, so we have to act on that. So.
So as part of this question.
Where we modify the motion, right? That somebody was.
I have to check with Tom and Steve if they wanna modify the motion.
As part of discussion, then would put us into three reports for next meeting.
Yeah.
And we're only talking about, we're only talking about December, so.
Yeah, it's up to you whether you want to modify your motion or not. If you don't, we'll take a vote and then we'll go on.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but anyone at the table can.
That's what I was asking. So I can, I can make a motion to modify the previous motion to, so that we can table the issue. That's what I would like to do now. I don't know how to go about doing that, but I happen to agree. I, okay, because I haven't even, I haven't even looked at these because I was in the middle of a project and I couldn't open up my email. So I just. Thirty minutes.
Carol has made a motion to amend the previous motion to table the reports until the next meeting. Second.
Oh, second.
Is John. Discussion about tabling, any further discussion on tabling? The the motion is now amended or is there's a motion to amend it? No more discussion? Can I have a vote? All in favor of of amending the motion, I guess, is the first thing. Say aye. I got David, John, Carol. That's three and any objections? I have two objections. What, do you use their point of order?
No, 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 just, uh, that would be a no, not objection per se.
I I'm, I'm, I would have to say yes, I do feel that it's fair to have people have a chance to absorb it. And I know Michelle's been very busy trying to catch up, so that would be helpful. So, uh, motion passes to amend the motion.
You have to do roll call.
Yes.
Oh, we have to do, I thought we just did. Okay.
Because of Zoom, is that why?
Yes, yes, whenever it's not unanimous. Vote to amend the motion.
Yes.
Uh, John.
Aye.
Uh, David.
Yeah.
Amy, yes.
No.
Tom, no.
Aye.
And John and Steve, no.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries to amend the motion. And, uh, and now we will vote on.
The motion to table.
On the motion to table the the report, uh, receiving a report until next meeting. All in favor, say.
We need another motion. You need someone to make that motion.
I I I will make the motion to table the revised December report and the revised January report until our next meeting.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Carol. All in favor, say aye. One, two, three, four. Okay, roll call. I, Amy says aye, David says aye, John says aye, Carol?
Aye.
Steve?
Nay.
Nay. Huh?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries to table, accepting the reports. Both reports. Uh, to the March meeting. With that, I do recommend that between now and the March meeting that please reach out to Michelle with your questions before the end of February is my recommendation so that she does have plenty of time to get any corrections or clarifications to uh, all of us in with with enough time for us to review those. So, great, and thanks for for taking some time to to review those, Ginger. Um, we have now the tax collectors report for January thirty, as of January thirty-first. That's the one I have. I don't have any previous ones. And may I have a motion to accept the tax collector's report dated January thirty-first?
Received.
Received, not accept, received.
I make that motion.
Thank you, Carol. Can I have a second? Um, seconds. Um, any discussions or questions?
It doesn't balance from the front sheet to the back sheet.
Often had a question about this, sorry.
It should tie the the number on the on this report here at the bottom should tie to total collections less refunds, and it does not.
And every time I ask that question, Rebecca says, um, to come in and talk to her. I mean, we do have the forty-seven ninety-two, five, ninety-six. No, we don't.
No, we don't.
We don't. So.
Off the eighty-four, twenty-six of collection fees and I may or may not be wrong, and if I'm wrong, that's fine.
Yes. And unfortunately, we don't have Rebecca.
I I have an asterisk that's tying the two numbers together and it's not.
Right.
I think that number, is it, is that number less the paid and unpaid refunds?
How much is the difference?
It's the eighty-four, twenty-six.
It's eighty-four, twenty-six, so it's not the same.
So I I just, I, if if it's accurate, that's fine. I just wanna understand it. Because to me, when I'm looking at reports, the asterisks shouldn't be. They're referencing one another.
Yeah, and I've I've often had this issue with this report. And I'm wondering if, um, I don't know if Rebecca's available to, um, come to one meeting to walk those questions that I'm getting asked, if she was in line to see when, if she would be available for the March session. I've really been a little stomachs by it as well. So, um, I'm actually, we have a motion on the table from Carol and Steve to receive the report as as presented. I'm going to make a motion to amend that, to table it. Can I have a second to table that, to, uh, receive that at the next meeting after we have some clarification? Steve, a second name. So I'm amending, uh, Carol and Steve's, uh, motion. And Steve's second. I'm gonna have, all in favor of amending the motion to receive the treasures report, say aye.
I'm sorry, tax collector.
Tax collector, so sorry.
Tax collector, but then we have to go around again?
Are you on, Carol?
Yes, I'm on.
Any, any opposed? Okay, so it was unanimous. Motion carries to amend the motion. May I have a motion to table the receiving the report? Can I have a vote to, uh, to table this? All in favor, say aye to table it. Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Okay, Argus, um, Board of Education report, we have uh, now that for, uh, January uh, for the end or to the end of January, I did ask uh, Pat if she could relabel this so that the first column and the heading would say June twenty-three January twenty-twenty-four, but I was told that um, they're not comfortable playing around with labeling in QuickBooks. So do it yourself. Sorry, I got a nay. Um, but this is our report. May I have a motion to receive the Board of Education report for January twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
Carol, thank you. A second.
Second.
David. And discussion or questions? None? May, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, uh, motion carries. Now for the entertainment, I give it over to Dave. It's much more entertaining than the rest of the agenda. You've gotta admit.
Okay, for communications, we've attached the communications for, uh, that you see listed to our our agenda. Most of those are asking for their, uh, consideration as the budget time comes up uh, for additional funding, uh, in our spending, uh, plan. The one letter in there that I will give to you going to slide number three report is the Tarrington Area Health District. As you know, Lou Timot is our, thank you, is our representative to the Tarrington Health District and they have, uh, maintained per capita five dollars and forty-eight cents for a total assessment of fifty-nine hundred seven dollars. They have not changed that since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, when it was actually went up from five dollars and forty-two cents. So if you look at health districts around the state, Lou was good enough to supply me with this, we, uh, we have, uh, we're below average. Average is fourteen dollars and eighteen cents per capita. So, uh, they're doing a, uh, great job with a sharp pencil. That's our annual assessment. The Mirror Dissolution Authority, again, with our solid waste, uh, municipal solid waste, we are looking at the, uh, Mira actually ending between twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven for uh, under this public act, one seventy, twenty-three dash one seventy, we are actively working with the COG on, uh, finding some type of solution. The one good thing is that the state has, uh, uh, told them that they cannot change your tipping fee right now as they go through this dissolution. But again, we are working feverishly with the COG to find a solution to our municipal solid waste. Uh, Board of Assessment Appeals are looking for alternate appointments. So I look out at the, uh, crowd here and say there there are open jobs in government here. So, uh, they will be looking. Uh, Transfer Station Report is attached. The one thing that is of particular note is our, uh, curbside compost, food scrap collection. October, it was eleven hundred pounds, November fifteen hundred, December fifteen hundred, must have to do with the holidays is all I can figure. Okay, but over the, uh, uh, over the life of this, we've had five point five, five point oh five tons since March, uh, twenty-twenty-three that was diverted from our uh, solid waste. So we saved some money there. Yes.
So we have that at our our transportation and we also have a, uh, sustainable CT project at Campus of Ella Friedman that also collects. And they don't, it's, it's not competition. As long as we reduce our waste, it's all okay.
It's, it's, I can't.
Are we, are we losing money by using one more than the other?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanna know.
Bridge Infrastructure Committee, um, we had a discussion tonight, uh, regarding putting together a, uh, uh, subcommittee for the solar project, but we decided that it would be a standalone committee. And, uh, Greg Marlowe spoke to that a little bit earlier. Uh, we're still working, uh, putting together our spending plan, our workshops. If there's any input from any member of the Board of Finance, if they would get it to one of the selectmen other than your, uh, annual budget, please do. We will present that to you a little bit further on down the road. U S Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, update and changes to local roadways, surface improvement data. I'll be working with Tim tomorrow morning at the quarter of nine, using their interactive map to show what we have paved or chipped sealed over the past year. Treasure Bookkeeper status, we will be having a, a meeting tomorrow, an executive session, ten AM. Economic Development Director, uh, Committee, I'm still waiting for a, a final update from the COG from their CED. Then we will act on it and I will share it. Uh, Plan of Conservation and Development, we voted to, uh, the selectmen voted to send it to town meeting. Uh, we spoke about snow removal in front of the Falls Village Inn, which was not an earlier new business. That was my mistake. It had been brought up, uh, in, uh, our comments at the beginning. I penciled in his old business because I didn't wanna address it. And as we go down, tax rebates, Board of Assessment Appeals, we're, uh, adding Sergey Fedorankov to our, uh, Infrastructure Committee. Uh, we formed the Solar Project Committee. We appointed, uh, Kim Mahoney uh, to be, uh, fill out the term of Ted Moy until June twenty-twenty-six.
Yes.
On the on planning and zoning. We spoke about early voting uh, and how it would affect the town and, uh, congratulations to Ted Moy for being chairman once again of the REC Committee. So.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dave? When is the, uh, Solar Committee starting to meet, do you know?
We are going to get that underway quickly. We haven't set a date yet, but we will be putting that together quickly.
And the budget workshops, so when you invite Board of Finance members to be in touch with you and your colleagues, um, it's with ideas or suggestions or for the.
Yes, and you'll, you can come in and sit on on them. They're, I I won't say they're rather dry, but we're putting together the spending plan and we're going over the line item, so.
And I also, as I have recommended, I've shared Board of Education workshops with you all, some very challenging, I could also want to deal with.
They're separate from us.
Right, but they also have workshop that we're invited to, yeah. Okay. I don't have any old business, but is there? I mean, it's not listed on the agenda, so I don't think we're, you don't, Denise, what is the protocol for that? If you don't have anything listed.
You can't talk, I can't discuss.
No old business listed, no suspense items, no new business. Any other business to come properly before the Board of Finance?
Nothing can come properly.
Have any, uh, public comment at the end?
I don't. Let it in the beginning.
If, if I may, Madam Chairwoman, just a comment, okay? Want us to look over our, my left shoulder here, and I said this at the last meeting, uh, during public comment. I would like to, uh, thank everyone here, thank, uh, the people that we have. We've won a democracy. And, uh, that was for having the highest turnout for voting in the state of Connecticut in towns less than ten thousand. The, uh, local newspapers were a little, uh, they covered it well, but there's one thing that they they all missed in the fact that I thanked all of the people who came out and both sixty-eight point seven percent was greater than any city in a town of Connecticut, in the state of Connecticut, I'm sorry. And, uh, not only were we the highest town under, uh, a population of ten thousand, we were actually the highest in the state overall. So I think that's really laudable. I think that's great that it happened here. And I look around and I know a lot of the people here were involved in that in a positive fashion. So I just wanted to convey my thanks to the members of the Board of Finance and again, to the members of the public who are here tonight.
Yeah, to the people who work the polls.
Wonderful. May I, is there going to be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting? This is Daily Revell.
Uh, no, we don't have it on our agenda, but thank you for asking. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Uh, Tom and John Stein.
Thank you.
And, uh, all in favor, say aye. Carol, are you saying aye?
I'm saying aye.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll oppose. Bravo, listen, Carrie.
Thanks, Amy.
My pleasure.
Um, when you're ready, let me know. I have, I'll have it for you tomorrow.